Well, good evening, everybody. It's 6:05 on my clock, so I think we'll get started on this snowy Monday evening. Welcome. Good evening to you and welcome to all of you to this Metropolitan Council Environmental Services Public Information Meeting and Public Hearing. I'm Peter Lindstrom, which is spelled P-E-T-E-R-L-I-N-D-S-T-R-O-M. And I am the Met Council Member for District 10. I'm also Chair of the Council's Environment Committee, which deals with matters like this involving our Metropolitan Council Environmental Services Division. You'll hear us use the acronym MCES in referring to this division of the Met Council. Before we begin, I'd like to welcome any public officials that we have with us today. Tim, do you know?
Yes, Peter, we have Met Council Members Deb Barber, Phil Sterner, and Susan Bento. And we have a Chris F. Maddie, if you could unmute Chris F. We have two Chris F as Met Council Members, and we're not sure which one this might be, or it could be a member of the general public.
It's Chris Ferguson.
Thank you, Council Member Ferguson.
Wonderful. Welcome, Council Members. If we could advance to Slide 3 at this time. Great. I would like to call the public hearing to order. Tonight, we are combining a public information meeting and a public hearing into one event. We will make a presentation to give you information that will get you up to speed on our Blue Lake Plant Project. We will also give you ample time to ask questions and offer comments, which we will include in our public hearing record. I'll quickly go over how you can submit comments or questions throughout our upcoming presentation, and we will address them during the public comment time. Please include your name, address, and the organization you represent, if any. Computer and mobile app users can use the QA box in the lower right corner of your screen. You can also submit comments or questions by calling 319-238-3413, or emailing comment@bluelakewwtp.com. Again, that's comment@bluelakewwtp.com. If you would like to make a comment or ask a question out loud during the public comment time, click on the raise hand symbol. We will unmute you when it is your turn to speak. Next slide, please. Our MCES staff joining me tonight to present the draft facility plan for this project and respond to questions and comments are Tim O'Donnell. Tim, would you like to introduce yourself?
Thank you, Council Member. My name is, again, is Tim O'Donnell. I'm a Project Citizen Liaison and a Senior Information Coordinator with Metropolitan Council Environmental Services. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. And Jason?
Thank you, Chair Lindstrom. My name is Jason Peterson. I work for Metropolitan Council Environmental Services, and I am a project manager at the Blue Lake Waste Water Treatment Plant.
Outstanding. Renee Heflin, welcome.
Thank you, Council Member Lindstrom. My name is Renee Heflin, R-E-N-E-H-E-F-L-I-N, and I am Manager of the Plant Engineering Group in Waste Water Planning and Capital Project Delivery Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to you all. The subject for this public meeting and hearing is the MCES Draft Facility Plan. This plan outlines our recommendations for the Blue Lake Waste Water Treatment Plant Improvements Project. With this project, we propose to rehabilitate and upgrade facilities at the treatment plant to improve the quality of the water after we clean it and discharge it back to the environment, and to expand plant capacity to meet anticipated regional population growth. Our staff will provide more details during our presentation. Next slide, please. The purpose of this public hearing is to summarize the proposed Waste Water Treatment Plant Improvements Project and explain alternative approaches that we evaluated, to answer any questions that you may have about the project, and receive your comments for the public record. In addition, we have a transcriber recording the proceedings tonight for our official public record. The transcription and video recording of the presentation will be posted on the project website later this month. As we conduct this public hearing, there are a few things I'd like to point out. All interested persons may present comments or opinions as they relate to the draft facility plan. We will read your comments and questions posted in the Q&amp;A text box in the order they are entered. If you would like to speak out loud, we will call on you and unmute your microphone in the order you have clicked your raised hand symbol. We ask you to state and spell your full name each time you speak. Also, please include your address and the organization you represent, if any. Individuals will have three minutes to offer their remarks. Designated representatives of groups or organizations will have five minutes. We also welcome written comments, and will provide you instructions on how to submit them. We also will read into the public record any comments we have received prior to tonight's public hearing. Next slide, please. For the last several weeks, a paper copy of the draft facility plan has been available for the public to review at the Shakopee Library and the Shakopee City Hall. An electronic copy of the draft facility plan is available on our project webpage on the Met Council website. We will continue to have the draft facility plan available for review through March 25, 2021, which is the end of the public comment period. On the screen, you can see the various ways you can submit comments in addition to commenting during this public hearing tonight. We will show you this again at the end of the hearing. Please note that we are using a different phone number and email address tonight so that we can take your comments and questions live during our hearing. Slide 7, please. Our project implementation schedule includes these key dates and timeframes. We publish a legal notice. We published a legal notice of the public information meeting and hearing in the Star Tribune newspaper on February 7, 2021. We mailed the public meeting and hearing notice on February 25 to property owners near the Blue Lake Plant, as well as numerous government and community stakeholders. We sent email invitations on March 1. We are holding the public meeting and hearing today, March 15, 2021. Met Council review and adoption of the final facility plan is scheduled for April 2021. And in May 2021, we will submit the plan to the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, and will include our application to be included on a priority funding list. This funding would be in the form of low-interest loans that MCES would pay off over a 20-year period. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Tim O'Donnell to begin tonight's presentation. Thanks, Tim.
Thank you, Council Member Lindstrom. My name again is Tim O'Donnell, spelled T-I-M-O apostrophe capital D-O-N-N-E-L-L, and I work at MCES. I'd like to begin our presentation with a brief overview of the regional wastewater system and our service area and facilities. Then we will zero in on the improvements we are planning for our Blue Lake Waste Water Treatment Plant, which is located in the city of Shakopee. The regional wastewater system is run by Met Council Environmental Services, and as Council Member Lindstrom noted, we go by the acronym MCES, so you'll hear that a few times tonight. We are an operating division of the Metropolitan Council. The map that you can see on the screen now is of the seven-county Twin Cities metropolitan area, and it shows our wastewater service area and the regional sanitary sewer facilities. The color shading on the map shows the area that we serve, which is basically the urban and suburban portions of the metro area. Each color shaded area corresponds to one of our nine regional wastewater treatment plants. Our wastewater collection system consists of approximately 640 miles of regional sanitary sewers, which we also call interceptor sewers. We also have 61 pump stations and 190 meter stations to measure the flow that comes from each community that we serve. Now, these interceptor sewers, in effect, intercept the flow of wastewater from 110 cities and townships in the metro area and carry it to our nine wastewater treatment plants. In addition to the regional sewers that MCES operates, these 110 communities combined operate more than 5,000 miles of local sanitary sewer pipes. The icons that you can see on the map indicate the location of our wastewater treatment plants. The nine plants combined treat approximately 250 million gallons of wastewater every day. They discharge the resulting clean water to the Mississippi, Minnesota, and St. Croix Rivers. To put this volume of wastewater into perspective, 250 million gallons would easily fill the Empire State Building each and every day. As you can see on this map, our Blue Lake Plant serves the southwest metro area that is shaded in blue, and this includes 29 cities and townships and approximately 300,000 people. It's important to remember that MCES's primary role is collecting and treating wastewater. It's also known as sewage. Basically, it's what goes down your drains. Your cities handle drinking water treatment and distribution, as well as stormwater management, but we partner with them in the collection and treatment of wastewater. We're often asked in public hearings like this, how does MCES finance the regional wastewater system? What we do is we build the 110 communities connected to the system to pay for our operation, maintenance, and capital improvement costs. These cities, in turn, bill these costs and their local costs to property owners connected to their local sewer systems. In the end, about 20% of your sewer bill pays for MCES's regional system costs, and about 40% stays in your community to pay for your local sewer system costs. The sewer user fees that we collect are enough to fund our regional wastewater system without the need for tax dollars. We also do not levy special assessments on properties near sewer projects like we are discussing here tonight. These projects have a much broader public benefit, and so their costs are paid for region-wide. So now, after this broad overview into who we are and what we do for the region, I'd like to turn it over to my colleague Renee Heflin to focus on our plans for the Blue Lake Waste Water Treatment Plant. Renee?
Thank you, Tim. The facility plan is a report that documents the planning activities conducted by MCES to evaluate and recommend facility improvements needed at the Blue Lake Waste Water Treatment Plant for the plant to reliably continue efficient and effective wastewater treatment service through the year 2050. It is a prerequisite in qualifying the proposed project for funding through the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority. This facility plan includes recommendation for phased implementation of Blue Lake Waste Water Treatment Plant improvements based on projected wastewater flows and loads, condition assessment of existing assets, and anticipated future treatment requirements. Budgetary capital costs for the recommended improvements are also included. All proposed improvements in this facility plan can and will be constructed within the existing property boundary without modification to either the fence line or the flood control levy. The Blue Lake Waste Water Treatment Plant is located in Shakopee, Minnesota, serves a population of approximately 300,000 in 29 communities. As shown here, wastewater from industries, commercial businesses, and households is collected in separate underground pipes that combine into larger pipes or interceptors. The large interceptors ultimately convey the wastewater to the wastewater treatment plant. This slide shows the various chemical, mechanical, and biological treatment processes used at the Blue Lake Waste Water Treatment Plant to remove pollutants from the wastewater. Note that the plant treats liquids, shown here in light blue, and wastewater solids, shown in tan. There are two outputs from the plant. The first, shown at the top right corner of this slide, is cleaned water discharged to the Minnesota River. The second, showed at the bottom right of this slide, is residual solids remaining after the reduction and treatment of wastewater solids. The Blue Lake Waste Water Treatment Plant produces what is called an exceptional quality or EQ bio solids product that can be used as a fertilizer. Liquid treatment facilities, including screening and grit removal and primary settling that removes solids from the wastewater. In secondary treatment, we add air to grow bacteria that remove organic waste and nutrients. Final settling collects the bacteria and either returns them to secondary treatment to continue working, or disposes of them through solids treatment. The clear liquid from final settling is disinfected to kill bacteria and viruses before being discharged to the Minnesota River. Solid treatment facilities include thickening, digestion, de-watering, and drying. These processes remove water, reduce the mass of solids, and destroy bacteria and viruses. The end product is fertilizer pellets that are suitable for land application without the restriction of sites, without site restriction, and reuse and fertilizer manufacturing. The Blue Lake Waste Water Treatment Plant is located on Highway 101 west of US 169 in Shakopee. Since its original construction in 1972, the Blue Lake Waste Water Treatment Plant has undergone construction of multiple expansion, rehabilitation, and improvements projects. And today, it has the capacity to treat 35 million gallons per day of wastewater on an average daily flow basis. Currently, the average wastewater through the plant is 27 and a half million gallons per day. The permitted capacity of the plant is given on an average wet-weather flow basis. The permitted flow is 42 million gallons per day on an average wet-weather flow basis. The Blue Lake Waste Water Treatment Plant has been in continuous compliance with permit limits for 15 years. The existing National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit for the Blue Lake Plant is currently up for renewal, which recurs on a five-year basis, on a five-year cycle. It is expected that the permit will be reviewed and reissued by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency shortly following adoption of this facility plan.
Hello. I am Jason Peterson, J-A-S-O-N-P-E-T-E-R-S-O-N. I am the project manager for the Metropolitan Council at the Blue Lake Waste Water Treatment Plant. The Blue Lake Facility Plan has been developed in response to three main drivers. The first is the need to meet future environmental regulations. The second is to serve projected growth in the service area, and the third is the need to rehabilitate aging equipment and infrastructure. These three drivers were each derived in response to the following information. First, the MPCA established a river eutrophication standard total maximum daily load, or TMDL, for the Minnesota River, which will require the Blue Lake Plant to meet an effluent phosphorus concentration of 0.3 milligrams per liter. The current BIOP process employed at the Blue Lake Waste Water Treatment Plant is insufficient for meeting these proposed limits. Second, the Blue Lake Waste Water Treatment Plant service area is growing and is expected to increase by approximately 170,000 residents by 2050. The current average daily wastewater flow capacity of 35 million gallons a day is not sufficient to process the increased flows associated with the increased population. And third, condition assessments indicate some facilities are nearing end of the service life, or will be within the planning window of this facility plan. The section of the plant that is closest to the facility that houses the drying process. Next slide, please. This graph shows more detail about the phosphorus limits at Blue Lake. The blue line shows the plant's effluent phosphorus concentration for the past eight years. The green and yellow lines show the current and future limits, respectively. You can see that the plant has a great history of operating well below the phosphorus limit. The chart shows that the concentration limit is not changing, but the TMDL is dropping by about 70%. If we divide the mass load by the flow of the plant, we will need to meet a concentration of 0.3 milligrams per liter. This is the basis for recommended secondary treatment process improvements and tertiary filtration. Next slide, please. This graph shows the historic 20-year population and influence flow for the service area between 1990 and 2019, and the 30-year projected population and influence flow between 2020 and 2050. The forecasted population in the top black dash line is taken from the Regional Development Guide, which is currently called Thrive 2040. It represents all population growth that is expected to occur within the communities, within the Blue Lake Service District. Included in this growth would be the population served by septic systems. It reflects the continuation of the 1.4% rate of growth that the Blue Lake Service Area has experienced since 2000. The lower set of line graphs represent the historic and projected flows within the Blue Lake Service Area. The black dash line uses the Thrive Population Forecasts to 2040 and equates the flow to these projections using an assumed flow of 95 gallons per capita. Again, it is important to note that not all of the Thrive Population Forecast will occur on land areas within the Blue Lake Service Area. Therefore, this line would represent a liberal estimation of the expected flow to occur in 2040. The orange dash line reflects the Blue Lake Service Area flow projections as stated in the Water Resources Policy Plan. It acknowledges those areas where growth is expected to occur within the service area and uses a generation rate of 60 gallons per capita and 15 gallons per employee per day. It also assumes that the existing flow base today will be reduced by 3% per decade for flow reduction from water conservation and INI mitigation. The 2050 figure for flow was determined using a straight-line projection of the 2020 through 2040 projections. The resulting envelope of potential flow for 2050 reflects a 5 million gallon-per-day spread between 40 and 45 million gallons a day. Next slide. This is a map depicting the Blue Lake long-term service area. It was created using local community input via their 2030 and 2040 comprehensive plans. It identifies the locations of the Blue Lake Waste Water Treatment Plant, as well as the two potential sites for a future Scott County plant. It identifies three areas reflecting the status of development. The blue area depicts the land areas that communities have identified to be within their 2040 wastewater service area. The crosshatched area are those within the 2040 service area that currently have local wastewater collection in place, or sewer in the street to provide service to those properties within the crosshatched area. It is important to note that not every property that falls within the crosshatched area has been developed yet. And by looking at the blue area that is not crosshatched, you can see there's a lot of land area where future growth can be accommodated. The light blue area in the picture covers the areas that have, for the most part, been identified by MCS that could be available for service after 2040. The associated boundary of the light blue areas is to illustrate that the local community in the future can delineate this boundary based on local needs and understanding of changes that some areas may face for development, whether those challenges may be environmental, historical, or financial. The area represented by any shade of blue is reflective of the ultimate service area that the existing plant and regulatory requirements could serve in the future. The ability for the future Scott County plant to offload flow from Eastern Carver County would take flow away from Blue Lake. The need for this redirection is not anticipated to be needed until well after 2050. Next slide. The third component that defined the problem statement and scope of this plan was a series of condition assessments. It began in 2018 with an assessment of NEFCO and the Final Stabilization Facility, which we call FSF. Over the next two years, assessments of the entire plant were completed to identify the current status and projected lifespan of each piece of equipment in the plant. The results were that some very pressing near-term needs were found. The assessment indicated that some pieces of equipment were already at the end of life and could not wait for the full facility plan and design process. MCS is proceeding with a construction project later this year to replace these items, which include the regenerative thermal oxidizer, or RTO, which is responsible for removing pollutants from the dryer exhaust and also replacing the mixing conveyor, which is pictured on the right. The assessment also found that the dryer itself has between eight and 10 years left. There is only one dryer, and there isn't an environmentally and economically friendly way to stop treating solids at Blue Lake for the months it would take to replace it. Therefore, this plan includes the installation of a second dryer that will be brought online and utilized while the current dryer is rehabilitated. We took all of these scope items and moved them into three time-bound phases. The first phase includes all the improvements needed within the next 10 years to meet our customer level of service objectives, and it is valued at 159 million. The second phase includes improvements that can be deferred for 10 to 15 years and is valued at 140 million. And the third phase is improvements identified within the 30-year planning window that can be deferred more than 15 years. The first phase includes improvements required within the next 10 years. A majority of the cost is in the three items shown in bold. The aeration tank improvements, the addition of the fourth digester, and the renewal of the FSF structure. And this includes the addition of the second dryer. Other components include the replacement of the grit collection system, primary treatment improvements, effluent process improvements, plant process control system improvements, the liquid waste receiving, and site building architecture. This phase will begin design next year, and construction is anticipated between 2025 and 2030. There are three components of Phase 1 that took some work to define the proposed scope. The first of these was the biological nutrient removal. We looked at six alternatives. The first alternative was to use the same process method we use now and just add more tanks until we had enough room. This proved to be a rather expensive option. The second alternative was step feed, where a portion of the flow would be returned to aeration to protect the solids balance during high-flow events. Alternative 2 is known as the modified Johannesburg, where tank spacing is modified to promote different bacteria interactions that will stabilize the process and lower chemical usage. Alternatives 3 and 4 would use one of the aeration tanks as a side-stream treatment tank with and without carbon addition. And finally, alternative 5 is the same as alternative 2 with the addition of flow equalization to the tanks. The recommended alternative is the modified Johannesburg. This option is one of the lower-cost options and provides for process flexibility, less chemical use, and smaller tertiary filters in Phase 2. The second set of alternatives were focused on the different ways we could use the digester gas captured in the treatment process. The current system uses digester gas in the dryer whenever possible and flares the rest. This tends to be about 34% of our gas being sent to the flare. For comparison, but not as a serious option, we calculated the value of flaring all of the gas. The third option was to modify the system to be able to use 100% of the digester gas in the dryer. The next alternatives were set up using combined heat and power generator with current power. The next alternatives were set up using combined heat and power generator with current and estimated utility rates. And the last option considered was renewable natural gas. The recommendation for the digester gas was to modify the system and use 100% of the gas in the dryer. This will lower our greenhouse gas emissions and our costs for purchasing natural gas. The renewable natural gas was an attractive option financially, but as we explored it, we discovered that there are a lot of external variables that affect the feasibility of achieving those savings. And there are many market variables that would drastically change the success of that program. So we decided to proceed with the lowest cost option that is controlled within our own sphere of influence, and that is to use 100% of the digester gas in the dryer. The third and final alternative analysis for Phase One was the question if adding a dryer is the second is the best technology to use. To start with, the Blue Lake Plant and NEFCO have worked together for the past 20 years to create a Class A EQ bio solids fertilizer pellet. When we started looking at alternatives, we wanted to move forward only with the options that would match our history and continue to produce the highest quality end product. That narrowed the selection down to two options: continue with drying or to switch to hydraulics. Digestion with drying is recommended because it is far less expensive and utilizes much of the current infrastructure. Which brings us to Phase Two. This phase includes improvements that can be deferred for 10 to 15 years. 96% of the costs come from a new primary treatment complex in addition of tertiary treatment to achieve the effluent phosphorus concentration of 0.3 milligrams per liter. Other components include renewal of digester gas equipment and chemical facilities, addition of a gravity belt thickener, and rehabilitation of the plant effluent structure. The initiation of Phase Two will be governed by MCS review of phosphorus permit requirements with the MPCA during the permit reissuance period. MCS anticipates that the reissued permit will provide the regulatory requirements for phosphorus and a compliance schedule for phosphorus reduction improvements. The anticipated timeframe is to begin design in 2027 and construction between 2030 and There are two alternative analyses to look at in Phase Two. The first is for the tertiary filters. Three alternatives were explored. The first was conventional sand filters. The second was cloth media filters, and the third was continuous backwash filters. The recommendation is to proceed with conventional filters because all three options are similar in price, and conventional filters are the best at handling high-flow and high-loading events, and they are also the least prone to foul or plug. And the final alternative analysis is for the consideration of managing phosphorus to get as much of the phosphorus nutrients into the solid stream and out of the liquid stream prior to filtration. We looked at four options that included the status quo, addition of magnesium hydroxide in the digesters, harvesting struite pellets, and phosphorus sequestration. Options three and four have high capital costs and will result in a separate pellet to be marketed. We feel that since there's already an established process and market for the fertilizer pellet, it would be simpler to stay with only one end product. The addition of magnesium hydroxide would pay for itself within the first year and would provide more phosphorus, which is a non-renewable nutrient, being returned to the environment in a state that is accessible to plants. Therefore, magnesium hydroxide addition is the recommendation. Phase Three includes all the remaining improvements identified in our 30-year planning window that can be deferred over 15 years. There are five items that make up a majority of the cost, and these include the addition of one aeration tank and aeration blower, installation of a channel from secondary clarifiers to the tertiary filtration that will replace much of the pond and leave it in place for waterfall habitat, expansion of effluent pumping, digester complex renewal, and thickening and de-watering equipment renewal and expansion. Other smaller items include replacement of the grit system, primary sludge pumps, replacement of the chemical handling building, equipment, and renewal of the plant process control network. The schedule for this work is dependent on actual population and flow increases and verifying the condition in the next 10 to 12 years. We anticipate that the design will begin in 2033 for a construction project between 2035 and 2040. We add up these three phases, the schedule for the overall project is shown here, with a construction project window every five years, starting at 2025, 2030, and 2035, with design for the two years prior to that. Planning began back in 2018, and is still going on even through this meeting tonight. In Phase Two, we have also added a process proving window, because tertiary filtration and the phosphorus limit of 0.3 is something new. We want to have time to really figure out how it works and to make it the most efficient and most effective that we So slide 20, please. One special aspect of the Blue Lake Service Area and this facility plan is the Industrial Pretreatment Incentive Program and Northern Star. Northern Star is a potato processing plant in Chantassen, and it is the largest organic load to the Blue Lake Plant. They are currently working to install pretreatment at their facility that will decrease the loading to the plant. This decreased loading will also make the current interceptor odor control system more effective. For planning purposes, this plan was put together, assuming there would be no decrease in loading from Northern Star. However, we anticipate that the system will markedly lower the organic load to the plant, and we have built into the facility plan the flexibility to respond to those changes. With the successful startup of the pretreatment, the construction of the secondary clarifiers, and the additional aeration tank will be able to be deferred into future phases or even projects. Another exciting part of what is happening at Blue Lake is the continued sustainability These are divided into environmental sustainability and sustainable communities. Environmental sustainability includes energy conservation, renewable energy, and phosphorus recovery. Blue Lake helps to promote sustainable communities through new odor control systems and providing skilled jobs to the area. Blue Lake is continuing, next slide, please. Blue Lake is continuing its energy conservation efforts in these projects through replacing old aeration diffusers with newer diffusers that have less head loss and thus less power requirements. Also, we will be adding a trim blower for the times when more air is needed. Operations will not have to start a large blower that would consume energy through over aeration. By being more efficient, MCS offsets the purchase of fossil fuel-based power. Offsetting the purchase of natural gas will be achieved through increased methane recovery to fuel the dryer. The greenhouse gas emission reduction of this work is 2,330 tons per year as CO2. Also, increased phosphorus removal is important because phosphorus is a non-renewable nutrient. Through production of a Class A EQ pellet with a higher phosphorus content, MCS is returning more of this nutrient to the environment in a form that can be beneficially reused. MCS has been working to improve the community through improving odor management. A project will be completed this spring that provides for three updates or new odor control systems at the plant. The gravity thickeners had old carbon replaced. The thickening and de-watering building had an old chemical system that was not suited for the types of odors we have been creating since the digesters were installed, and that was replaced with a carbon system that matches that in the gravity thickeners. And third, the screenings building has new odor control, carbon-based again, added to it for the first time. So we had two upgraded and one brand-new odor control systems in the plant. In the interceptor system, bioxide is being added at L71. Because the bioxide dosing station is not addressing all of the odor issues, MCS is advancing additional studies to determine the feasibility, scope, and optimal location of a separate odor control facility. This work is being done independent of this facility plan. MCS is also working with the city, exploring an odor management strategy that would install odor reduction baffles in the MCS interceptor system. If MCS determines that this concept is feasible, implementation could potentially occur before this coming winter. Now I'd like to hand it back to Renee.
Thank you, Jason. I am going to speak to an emerging contaminant of concern PFOS. Per and polyfluoroalkyl substances, or PFAS, are a large group of man-made chemicals widely used in industry and commercial products since the late 1950s. There are over 5,000 specific chemicals included in this group. These chemicals have been used in making stain-resistant fabric, fire extinguisher foam, non-stick coatings, and dental floss. PFOS is an emerging contaminant of concern because it has been linked to increased risk of adverse effects to human health, including thyroid disease, liver disease, and kidney cancer. As we speak today, the National Regulatory Framework for Controlling PFOS in the Environment is in the research and development phase. New analytical methods with lower detection limits are needed to be able to monitor PFOS in water, wastewater, and solids media, and inter-agency coordination is needed to find effective, efficient, and site-specific solutions to the PFOS challenge. Wastewater treatment plants, PFOS enters wastewater treatment plant with the influent wastewater. And the plants currently don't treat for PFOS, and they do not add PFOS to the environment. They are conduits. PFOS that enters a wastewater treatment plant is either discharged with the treated wastewater or it exits with the final wastewater solids product. That's because the wastewater treatment plants are designed, constructed, operated, and maintained to meet permit limits. September of last year, the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency lowered the site-specific water quality criterion for perfluoro octane sulfonate, PFOS. This is one of the PFAS compounds, perfluoro octane sulfonate, PFOS. Again, this is not a limiting value on anything, but the water quality criterion is a goal. The new value is one-third of the Minnesota Department of Health Guidance Value for drinking water, and it applies to Lake Elmo, Bide Makaska, Washington County surface waters, and the Mississippi River Basin. Pool two, excuse me, Mississippi River Pool Two. PFOS levels below 0.05 nanograms per liter prevents PFOS accumulation in fish and prevents the associated health risk to the people consuming those fish. MCS has been monitoring four PFAS compounds in the Blue Lake wastewater treatment plant discharged since 2012, as required in its current NPDS permit. The MPCA may impose additional requirements in the next permit, but the plant currently does not have limits for PFAS. For the purpose of this facility plan, it is too early to determine whether the PCA will impose permit limits or whether capital improvements will be necessary to address PFOS. What I can say is that MCS will work with the region's communities, watersheds, and industries together, as we always have, within the PCA's regulatory framework to reduce PFOS discharge by MCS wastewater treatment plants. Next slide, please. In summary, the proposed capital improvements outlined in the Blue Lake Wastewater Treatment Plant Improvements Facility Plan are needed to achieve new permit limits for phosphorus, to serve growth in the Blue Lake Service Area, and to preserve existing assets that are nearing end-of-service life. Our recommended improvements are selected in a way that promotes environmental sustainability and meets our customer level of service objectives. This slide summarizes the impact of the proposed project on the municipal wastewater charge and the service availability charge. This project is a part of our capital program, which has a budget of between $150 million to $180 million per year. This project, which will be spread out over a 15-year period, represents $15.64 of the municipal wastewater charge, or MWC. The MWC is currently $188 per household, and it will increase 3% to $193 per household beginning in 2030. This project represents 8.3%, or $207.31, of the current service availability charge of $2,485 per household equivalent. This project does not necessarily cause rate increases. We budget about $150 to $180 million per year in capital projects, and historically we spend about 90% of that budget. And if we did not spend the money here at Blue Lake, has historically shown we will have other system needs with as large a system or similar to a system like ours.
Councilmember Lindstrom, this is Tim O'Donnell again. I will go through quickly the next steps in the process here. We've reminded attendees already that the deadline for comments on the draft facility plan is March 25, 2021, so there's 10 more days after the hearing tonight to submit comments. We will present the final version of the facility plan for this project to the Metropolitan Council's Environment Committee for their review on April 13. Then our next step would be the full Metropolitan Council's adoption of this facility plan April 28. And then by May 1, we're looking to submit the final facility plan to the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, and we will include an application for Clean Water Revolving Fund Priority Project Priority List. Next slide. Go ahead, Councilmember Lindstrom.
Great, thank you, Tim, and thanks, Jason and Renee. That was excellent information and a lot of information, and I suspect there may be a question or two that you'd like entered into the Q and A at this time. And I'll just remind folks that if you speak, if you could state your full name and spell your full name, that would be fantastic, and address as well, and any sort of organization that you may represent. So let's take a look at the Q and A. Any of you folks out there, any questions about all of this information that was presented? And I may not be able to see anybody that has their, see everybody that has their hand raised, so I'll ask my colleagues to keep an eye out for that as well.
A councilmember, I do not see any questions in the chat or hand raised on the attendees' list yet. But certainly, folks, if you have comments or questions to make, feel free to do so in the chat or raise your hands. In the meantime, I'm going to go ahead and read a set of questions and comments that came in prior to the public hearing. This may help answer questions that you have or may help prompt something new to come to mind, so bear with me. This one is a little bit lengthy, but we'll work our way through it. These comments and questions we received in advance of tonight's public hearing are from Steve Lilahaug, and that spells S-T-E-V-E-L-I-L-L-E-H-A-U-G. And Mr. Lilahaug is the City of Shakopee's Public Works Director and City Engineer. We responded to Mr. Lilahaug by email, and I will read our response. We responded to Mr. Lilahaug by email, and I will read our response to each of his questions and comments as I go through them. Mr. Lilahaug states that generally, the wastewater treatment plant at Blue Lake is out of sight and out of mind for many people, except for the smell at times. With that said, it would help us to better understand your project by providing a few more details as to what the impacts these improvements will be to the site and to the community as follows. And Mr. Lilahaug grouped these into four subject areas. The first is size. His question is, is the footprint expanding outside of the existing fenced perimeter at the plant? Our response is, all of the improvements will take place in the existing perimeter. Both the fence and the flood levee are located where there is room for the new tanks and buildings to be installed without any perimeter modifications. The next question, are there structural or building improvements onsite that will require the city's building official to be involved with? Our response is, yes, there will be a need for a building official involvement with new buildings that include an expansion of the final stabilization building, and there will be a controls building at the center of each new pair of clarifiers. The contractor will be applying for the permits for the work done in their phase prior to construction. Mr. Lilahaug's next topic is traffic. What is the expected transportation impacts with the plant expansion? Our response is, MCS advances the projects identified in this program in a phased manner. During construction, there will, will be increased traffic at the site associated with construction personnel and materials and supplies delivery. Our experience in advancing other projects at the Blue Lake Plant suggests that we will be able to accommodate parking of construction personnel at the plant, that we will need to acquire, require the construction personnel stagger starting times to avoid any potential backup of vehicles at our security gate, and that we will need to coordinate delivery of equipment or materials to prevent queuing or stacking of vehicles onto Highway 101. After the completion of the construction projects, the traffic pattern should return to current levels. Farther into the future, there is a potential for minimal additional traffic, such as two to four more trips per day for additional dumpsters and chemicals related to the increasing wastewater flow at the plant. To avoid potential impacts from construction traffic, MCS will engage the City of Shakopee, Scott County, and the Minnesota Department of Transportation, MinDOT, during preliminary design phase to develop a traffic management plan. An additional traffic question, are access changes expected with the phase one improvement? Our response is, MCS does not anticipate any access changes as a result of the proposed improvement. In the subject of odors, are there expected increases in odor issues? And what improvements are being included for odor issue mitigation, both for existing odors and higher-capacity odors? Our response to those questions, MCS is striving to be a good neighbor and address odor issues. There are no proposed odor improvements in this facility plan because of multiple projects that are currently underway, and we'll go into those three projects. The first project is nearly complete. In 2020, MCS replaced an old and fading chemical system in the thickening and de-watering area with new, with a new carbon filtration system. This new system has lower maintenance with no chemical deliveries and is better suited for the types of odors we experienced since the installation of our solids digesters in 2010. This project also replaced the carbon in the gravity thickeners and installed two units at the head of the plant, which has never had odor control before. The second project, we will advertise this spring, and in this project will involve replacing the regenerative thermal oxidizer with the acronym RTO, replacing that stack at the final stabilization building. The new RTO will benefit from technology advancements from the last 20 years that will better control odors as well as increase capacity for treatment. The, the third project to improve odors is being undertaken by MCS's Interceptor Engineering Area to study the odors that are in the interceptor system and lift station, bringing wastewater to the Blue Lake Treatment Plant. The, the initial study will be completed in March and will be used to determine a strategy to mitigate odors in the interceptor system. The final area Mr. Lilahaug asks about is plant capacity. His question is, what is the planned increased capacity? Our response is, the plant will have an increased liquids capacity going from 35 million gallons per day to 44 million gallons per day as an average, average annual flow. Mr. Lilahaug ends with a comment, please confirm that these capacity improvements do not change the planning for the new Southwest wastewater treatment plant in Louisville slash Jackson Township area. And we responded, the work described under this facility plan is consistent with the 2040 Water Resources Policy Plan. Furthermore, MCS continues to plan for acquisition of property for a plant in South, in Scott County, and this facility plan does not impact the long-term service strategy for the, for serving the southwest part of the region. Mr. Lilahaug concluded his comments that having a better narrative to these questions will help them jointly better inform their leaders and the general public. So we thank Mr. Lilahaug for posing us those questions, and we hope that we've answered them to his satisfaction. At this time, I don't see any, any questions from our audience listed in the chat. No hands raised. But we do invite you folks, if anything comes to mind, let us know. Give you a minute or so to ponder that and ask us questions if you have any.
Any raised hands out there? I am not seeing any. Going once. I will remind folks that this public hearing will remain open until 5:00 PM on Thursday, March 25th, 2021. And again, you can submit comments through any of the methods that you're looking at on the screen right at this moment by email, postal mail, phone, or TTY comments. And next slide, please. And as a reminder, here is how you can review a copy of the draft facility plan. It's at Shakopee City Hall and at the library and on our website. Next slide. So from now through the next several years, as we design and construct our projects, you may visit this webpage for project-specific contact information and links to the latest project information. So I'll make a final call out there. Anybody wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, hearing none. Tim, am I missing anybody out there?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. We will adjourn the public hearing. Thanks a ton for participating. Really appreciate it. Your input is, is super important, and we've got some big projects coming up in the years ahead, and we'll keep everybody in the loop as we move forward. Thank you so much, and enjoy the rest of your evening.